I would like to call the Special Education Board Meeting for March 30, 2020, to order. The Wichita Public Schools will be the District of Choice in our region where all students and staff are empowered to dream, believe, and achieve. And we would like to welcome all of our board members and all of our community that's watching us on TV. We are doing this differently because of the orders that have arrived, and you're going to hear us explain that to you. But we are so thankful to be able to be here and to be able to carry on the work of the district because that's our job and we take it very seriously. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? Thank you. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. We do today have five board members physically present here in the room. We have two of our board members that will be coming in remotely. That's Ernestine Crable and Julie Hedrick. I am going to ask Alicia to make a statement, please. Alicia?
I would like to read the rules for board members during an emergency. The Attorney General has drafted regulations that have been approved and are in effect which regulate compliance with the Kansas Open Meetings Act during times where there is a shelter-in-place order that impedes board members or members of the public from attending meetings in person. First, the regulations require that meetings be open to the public through the use of a telephone or other medium of interactive communication. Monday's board meeting will be available to the public live via Wichita Public Schools TV on Cox Channel 20, through the website at www.usd259.org/WPSTVonline, and through the livestream app on phones, Ruku, and Apple TV. The Attorney General's regulations set certain rules that board members while participating in a board meeting must follow. The rules apply whether the board member is present or in person or joins the meeting by remote means. Number one, all requirements of the Kansas Open Meetings Act remain in full force and in effect during any declared emergency. Number two, each member of the Board of Education, staff, or presenter must state their name and position each time they begin speaking so that the speaker can be readily identified by remote listeners or observers. Number three, each member of the Board of Education must state their name before voting on motions. Number four, all participants must keep microphones, phones, or other electronic devices muted when the participants are not speaking so that the ability of remote listeners or observers to hear the meeting is not unnecessarily impeded. Number five, each motion must be stated before the board votes, and the result of the final vote must be announced. Number six, several other items will be addressed by the board president in a statement she will make at the start of today's meeting.
My name is Cheryl Logan, and I'm the President of the Wichita Public Schools Board of Education. Today, March 30, we are conducting a special meeting of the Board of Education. Official business will be conducted during this meeting. COVID-19 and the Governor's Shelter-in-Place Order mandate that today's meeting will be conducted in an unusual manner. No members of the public are present at this meeting. Two board members, Julie Hedrick and Ernestine Crable, are attending the meeting remotely. The five other members, including myself, are attending the meeting in person. Members of the public are not here because of the Governor's orders for all citizens in Kansas to shelter in place and that no more than 10 people can gather in one place. It is important to the Wichita Public Schools Board of Education that in spite of the fact that the public is not present, we conduct this meeting in compliance with the Kansas Open Meeting Act. In this regard, this meeting is available to be viewed by the public in the following ways. The board meeting will be shared via live WPTV on Cox Channel 20 and at the district's website, www.usd259.org/WPSTVonline, or by searching WPTV on the livestream app for phone, Ruku, and Apple TV. Following the conclusion of today's meeting, this meeting will be available to our Wichita Public Schools YouTube channel. It will also be rebroadcast on WPTV Cox Cable 20 and online at WPTV 10 times per week. The rebroadcast scheduled is available on our website at www.usd259.org/boe. This information was made known to the public by public notices by the clerk of the board published on March 26 and on March 30, 2020. At this board meeting, all board members, district staff, and presenters will identify themselves by name and position before they speak. This will assist the public in following the meeting. Motions will be read before they are voted on, and each board member will announce how they are voting. The outcome of the vote will be announced after the vote has been taken. This meeting is taking place at the School Service Center located at 3850 North Hydraulic Street, Wichita, Kansas. Board of Education meetings will be conducted at the School Service Center until shelter-in-place orders are no longer in effect. The next school board meeting will be April 20, 2020, at 12:00 noon at the School Service Center. The public communications team item that allows members of the public to speak at board meetings has been removed from the agenda. Public communications will not be placed back on the agenda until the shelter-in-place orders are no longer in effect. The reason for this is because members of the public cannot attend meetings in person because of the shelter-in-place order and the order that public gatherings be no more than 10 persons. There will be an executive session at the end of this meeting. The following procedure will be used concerning the executive session. A motion will be presented by the board member that states the subject matter and the justification under the Kansas Open Meeting Act for going into executive session. The motion will state the time the board will return from executive session. The live broadcast of the meeting will not end until the board returns from executive session and adjourns the meeting. In closing, there are usually, and these are unusual and unprecedented times, let me assure you that the board intends to conduct its meetings during the time shelter-in-place orders are in effect, in compliance with the Kansas Open Meetings Act, and in a way that protects the safety and health of the public, district staff, and our board members. Thank you. We will continue on with the board meeting. First item, Mike.
Under policy, Propose revisions to BOE Policy 0200, Board of Education Agendas and Meetings. BOE Policy 0200 contains the procedures for BOE agendas and meetings. AIP 10 describes voting during BOE meetings. The following revisions are proposed for AIP 10E with new policy language. Members must be physically present at Board of Education meetings to vote on agenda items, but may participate in discussions via teleconference. During an emergency, such as a time when schools are closed by an executive order of the Governor of Kansas, board members may participate in voting by teleconference. It is recommended the board approve the proposed revisions to BOE Policy 0200.
Dr. Thompson?
Is that me? This particular board agenda item is just, will allow us to be able to have all of our board members that are on teleconference to be allowed to participate in voting. The board policy states currently that that's not allowed. However, in this time and in this uncertainty, we are asking that you vote to approve this particular board policy so that we may allow business to continue to occur and that we make sure that all of our board members can participate in a safe manner.
This agenda item, obviously, we have two of our board members today that are not present with us, so they may not vote on this because we have to vote to change this before we can allow them to vote remotely. So is there any discussion on this?
I move, this is Mike Rody, District 5. I move that we make the recommended action.
Ben Blankley, District 1.
I second.
It's been moved by Mike Rody and seconded by Ben Blankley. Would you please cast your votes by saying your name into the speaker and then voting yes or no, starting with Ron Rosales?
Ron Rosales, District 6, yes.
Stan Reeser, District 4, yes.
Mike Rody, District 5, yes.
Cheryl Logan, All City, yes.
Ben Blankley, District 1, yes.
Our two, that vote passes 5 to 0. So we now can allow our two remote board members to vote on the next items. Next item, Mike.
Item B, Propose revisions to BOE Policy 0100, Organization and Functions of the Board. BOE Policy 0100 addresses the board's function of adoption and/or review of policies in AIP 4. It is proposed that during an emergency, such as a time when schools are closed by the executive order of the Governor of Kansas, the board may approve a new policy or major content revisions to existing policy after a single review.
Our two remote board members, if you, we're getting some reverberation from you. Please turn off whatever you have that's electronic.
We're getting some reverberation from you. Will you turn off whatever you have that's electronic?
Okay, turn the TV off, Ernestine. Do not have the TV on.
Oh, God, will I just mute?
Yeah, turn it off totally.
Okay. Done.
That, that solved the problem. Thank you very much. Okay, I'm sorry, Mike, because of that confusion. Would you mind reading that item again, please?
Propose revisions to BOE Policy 0100, Organization and Functions of the Board. BOE Policy 0100 addresses the board's function of adoption and/or review of policies in AIP 4. It is proposed that during an emergency, such as a time when schools are closed by the executive order of the Governor of Kansas, the board may approve a new policy or major content revisions to existing policy after a single review in the policy section of the BOE agenda. It is recommended the board approve the proposed revisions to BOE Policy 0100.
Again, Dr. Thompson.
This particular board policy is specifically talking about the policies. As you know, in our policies currently, it talks about having to have two reads for one agenda item. So whenever there's a policy that's brought forth, you all have to bring it to one meeting, and then you approve it at that meeting or review it, and then it's brought to another meeting following that for approval. But because of this uncertain time and making sure that we get things done in more of a timely manner with certain things, we're asking you to suspend this portion of the policy so that you can review policies in one read and approve them with one read. And we'll only bring the necessary policies that we need to bring to you in that matter. We won't just keep bringing a lot of policies for one read. It'll just be policies that we need one read, pretty quick turnaround, so that we can move forward with our work.
Are there any questions on this?
This is Mike Rody, District 5. I move to accept.
Ben Blankley, District 1. I second.
It's been moved by Mike Rody in District 5 and Ben Blankley that we accept that we change our policy for a single read in order to be able to move as quickly as we have to this summer. I, again, am going to ask everybody to state your name and vote yes or no, including our two people that are joining us remotely. Ron?
Ron Rosales, District 6, yes.
Stan Reeser, District 4. I just wanted to point out to the public that since that this is narrowly worded, there would have to be a Governor's Action or executive order for this to take effect, so I vote yes.
Mike Rody, District 5, yes.
Cheryl Logan, All City, yes.
Ben Blankley, District 1, yes.
Julie Hetrick, District 2, yes.
Ernestine Crable, District 3, yes.
Thank you. Motion passes 7-0. Next item.
Mike Willoughby, Clerk of the Board. Item C, under policy, New Policy 1230, Acceptable Device and Communication Use by Staff, Students, and the District. New Policy 1230 consolidates the online and acceptable use policies and related documents as shown in the BOE agenda that is published online in Table 1 and Table 2. The timely purpose for bringing this policy update to the board now is to provide USD 259 students with additional technology access and resources in spring 2020. As noted in Table 1, the new policy 1230 is titled Acceptable Device and Communication Use by Staff, Students, and the District. This is a new policy that addresses the content of the policies that are proposed for deletion in Table 2 of the agenda. The current 1232A becomes 1230A, Acceptable Use of Computers, Student Access Contract. The access contract is renumbered with updated cross-referencing. There are no other substantive revisions. 4006B becomes 1230B, Guidelines for the Use of Social Media by Employees. The Guidelines document is renumbered with updated cross-referencing. There are no other substantive revisions. In Table 2 of the BOE agenda that is published online, Current Policy 1230 is deleted, Internet and Online Services. The content of Current Policy 1230 is addressed in New Policy 1230 in Table 1. 1232 is deleted, Acceptable Use of Computers, Students. The content of P1232 is addressed in New P1230 in Table 1. 4006 is deleted, Acceptable Use of Computers for Employees. The content of 4006 is addressed in New Policy 1230 in Table 1. It is recommended that the board approve New BOE Policy 1230, Acceptable Device and Communication Use by Staff, Students, and the District. The new policy will go into effect immediately to improve students' educational opportunities during the emergency closing of schools in the district in spring 2020.
Obviously, with our schools closed down, we are having to do things a little bit differently, and we've got to put some technology in place quickly. That's the reason we're bringing this policy to you with a one read, because we are wanting to get email addresses for all of our students and do several things that are critical for us to be able to do to carry on school. Do you want to add anything, Dr. Thompson? No, I think you've covered it. Thank you. Okay. Are there questions on any of these policies or the changes in these policies?
Ben Blankley, District 1. I had two things. One is just a bookkeeping kind of thing. The footer on the published draft says 1200, and it should say 1230.
Where is that located, please?
It's at the bottom.
Okay.
And then, the second one is more of a, perhaps we should revisit this particular policy in the future. It is Item 5A, Student/Staff Generated Work. It states work created with a district tool or resource is the property of the school district. And my ongoing concern with that is we have fine arts students, for example, that may use a district camera or a district laptop to create works that they then offer in the marketplace themselves for sale. We had that recently, a couple months ago, and so I think that particular section might need some fine tuning for a circumstance like that, but that's not something that I would hesitate about approving this policy today for.
You're comfortable with, this is Cheryl Logan, you're comfortable with approving the policy or voting on the policy today and then looking at this in the future to make sure we've worded it correctly?
Yes.
Are you comfortable with that?
Yes, I'm comfortable with that.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay.
Ben Blankley, District 1. I move we approve the new policy P1230.
Ron Rosales, District 6, second.
Okay, it was moved by Ben Blankley and seconded by Ron Rosales. Would you please cast your votes, and we'll start with Ben this time.
Ben Blankley, District 1, yes.
Cheryl Logan, All City, yes.
Mike Rody, District 5, yes.
Stan Reeser, District 4, yes.
Ron Rosales, District 6, yes.
Julie Hetrick, District 2, yes.
Ernestine Crable, District 3, yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Just so that it's clarified for our public, we just adopted the 1230A, 1230 policy and the 1230A and B policies, or do you want to make separate motions on that? Okay, so all three of those policies have been adopted, along with deleting the ones that are listed, 1230, 1232, and 4006. So those policies have made some adjustments. Next item, please.
Mike Willoughby, continuing under the policy section, Flight 4, Second Review, Consolidation of Safety Services Policies. As part of the ongoing effort to consolidate BOE policies, administration proposes the following consolidation of safety services policies. On March 9, the board had its first review of Flight 4 and suggested no further revisions. Current Policy 1150 becomes 2379. Title, Tobacco-Free Policy for All District-Owned Property. The policy now includes vape pens. Policy is renumbered and assigned to safety services. Policy 1151 becomes 2375, Possession of Firearms on District Property. The policy has been reviewed, renumbered, and assigned to safety services. Policy 1462, Student Behavior Assault and/or Battery of Staff Member, reflects recommended practice of providing education and resources, supports the district goal of increasing graduation rates. Administrative responsibility is assigned to safety services. Policy 1463, Student Discipline and Staff Responsibility is proposed for deletion. Information in this policy is already addressed in P2351, School Safety and Security Incident Reporting, P5116, Emergency Safety Interventions, P1464, Student Behavior Regulations, and P2360, School Safety and Protection. 1467, Drug Detection Dogs, Proposed for Deletion. Selected content has been moved to 1470, Search and Seizure Students. 1469, Search and Seizure School Facilities, Proposed for Deletion. Selected content moved to 1470, Search and Seizure Students. 1470, Search and Seizure Students and Their Personal Possessions. Consolidation of 1467 and 1469 into 1470. Updates 1460 to match practices regarding searches, property, and law enforcement detection, canines. 2325, Safety School Safety Patrols, Proposed for Deletion. Relevant content has been moved to 2360, School Safety and Protection, approved by the board on 1/13/2020. 2350, School Security Personnel. Safety Services recommends the following revisions to 2350. Delete AIP 1, which details job duties and responsibilities. Delete AIP 2, the last sentence of AIP 3, addresses the training of security officers. AIP 2 duplicates this information. It is recommended the board approve the above safety services policies.
And this is a second read on these policies? We did have them at our last meeting, so are there questions or concerns on these? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Ben Blankley, District 1. I move we approve the proposed Flight 4.
Ron Rosales, District 6, I second.
It's been moved by Ben Blankley and seconded by Ron Rosales. Would you please cast your vote, Ben?
Ben Blankley, District 1, yes.
Cheryl Logan, All City, yes.
Mike Rody, District 5, yes.
And I was just going to, Stan Reeser, District 4, I was just going to clarify for those who may be watching the BOE meeting for the very first time. A second review is different from the first review in that we've already gone over the policy, but we give it a marinating time, and then we can have, we can make changes later, but after the second review, it's final, correct?
Yes, we vote on it.
Stan Reeser, District 4, I vote for, yes?
Ron Rosales, District 6, yes.
Julie Hetrick, District 2, yes.
Ernestine Crable, District 3, yes.
The motion passes 7-0. Next item.
Mike Willoughby, Consent.
Ron, do you have anything to pull from the consent agenda?
Nothing.
Stan? Yes, Mike?
Mike Rody, District 5, yes, I do, I have, I want to pull C1, Additional Bulk Miscellaneous Computers and Accessories.
Okay. Ben?
That was the same one I had.
Okay.
And that was the one I, Stan Reeser, that was the one I had as well, so.
Okay. Julie, do you have anything you'd like to pull?
This is Julie Hetrick, District 2, I have nothing to pull.
This is Ernestine Crable, District 3, I have nothing to pull.
Okay.
This is Stan Reeser, District 4. I move that we adopt the consent, approve the consent agenda except for C1.
Ben Blankley, District 1, I second.
Okay, it's been moved by Stan Reeser and seconded by Ben Blankley that we approve the rest of the consent agenda. Please cast your vote. Ron?
Ron Rosales, District 6, yes.
Stan Reeser, yes.
Mike Rody, District 5, yes.
Cheryl Logan, All City, yes.
Ben Blankley, District 1, yes.
Julie Hetrick, District 2, yes.
Ernestine Crable, District 3, yes.
The motion passes 7-0. Let's look at Item C1, which is Additional Bulk Miscellaneous Computers and Accessories. And I, because this has been pulled, Mike, I'm going to ask that you read this so that the public knows what we're voting on.
Yes, and before I do that, could you please confirm who seconded the motion on the consent?
Oh, I'm sorry. It was voted, it was Mike Rody and Ben Blankley seconded.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
He, he motioned it.
Oh, Stan motioned, oh, I apologize. Stan motioned it and Ben seconded.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for correcting me.
This is Mike Willoughby. Under consent, the pulled item is under C, Bids, Item 1, Additional Bulk Miscellaneous Computers and Accessories. The contact person is Rob Dixon, Chief Information Officer. The funding source is Capital Supplemental General 2019-20 Budget. Background, as part of the purchasing consent on July 29, 2019, the board approved, quote, "the multiple sources of Apple Computer, Inc. of Austin, Texas, Can-Am Wireless LLC of Irving, Texas, Dell Marketing LP of Round Rock, Texas, Firefly Computers LLC of St. Paul, Texas."
Paul, Minnesota, Kansas City Audio Visual of Kansas City, Missouri, and Riverside Technologies, Inc. of North Sioux City, South Dakota, in the amount not to exceed $5,200,000 for district standard hardware, approved equipment required by district schools and departments," unquote. Purpose, today's item requests the addition of two vendors to the approved list. One, current purchases of Microsoft Surface computers for elementary staff planned computer replacements will make it necessary to add the Microsoft Store vendors that supply computers at this time. This will support staff during the current changes required to support continuous learning. Two, Kensington Cases is added to provide cases for the planned computer replacements. Recommendation, it is recommended that the board authorize the addition of Microsoft Store NASPO Value Point State of Kansas Contract Number 403395 and Kensington Cases NCPA Contract 01-97 for computer purchases. This item dedicates $3.4 million of the $5.2 million that the board approved on July 29th, 2019, to purchase new computers for elementary classrooms. Microsoft Surface computers and Kensington Cases are not available from the vendors listed in the background above.
All right, Mike, you pulled this item?
Okay, just to make sure that everyone is speaking into the mic so that the folks can hear us that are on Cheryl, I mean Julie and Ernestine. The TV folks can hear you, but they're having a little bit difficulty hearing you there. So if you could speak into the mic and get a little bit closer, that'd be great for our listeners.
Okay. Is there anything you want to add on this agenda item, Dr. Thompson?
I would like to see if there's any additional questions after that has been read.
Okay. Mr. Rody?
Mike Rody, district five. Yeah, I looked at this several times over the last week since I've got it. And one of the first things that I want to say is, is I've gotten some calls from teachers before the last board meeting complaining about buying computers that didn't have keyboards on them. They were the Surface, the Microsoft Surface is what they thought they were going to be getting without keyboards. Do we know if they're going to have keyboards dedicated to the, like a laptop, which Surface does have that option, but it's, you have to buy them separately?
Well, these, what we don't, we don't have that here. There are separate keyboards, however, if, I mean, just like we've done any other time we've made any purchase, if there's adjustments or additional things that people would like to have, not everybody's going to want an additional keyboard. But if there are folks that need or request or have to have those, those are things that we could support teachers with as we do any other requests that they may have.
Okay, and that would be an additional cost to what we're spending now?
That would be correct, but most people, a lot of people would not want an additional one on top of the one that they have with their laptop. But if they do, then we can support them.
The other thing that I came up with was is if you take 34, $3.4 million and divide it by 500, that means we're buying 7,000 of these computers, which is probably within the range of the price. I'm hoping that we're not spending much more than that on a Surface. We don't have that many elementary teachers. And that doesn't, that doesn't add up to me.
Well, we're not just doing teachers, just elementary classroom teachers. You're also talking about your counselors, your social workers, your nurses. All of those folks are also included in this. So it would be clerical folks. So you are looking at a, all of the elementary staff, not just teachers.
Okay, give me a moment to find that in here.
Okay.
There was a statement in here and I can't find it for all, I can't find it at the moment and it may be in an earlier edition that stated it was for elementary, but.
If you look down here, Mr. Rody, in the background, I think maybe this might help. It says, "Your last sentence approved equipment required by district schools and departments."
Here's, here's the statement I was looking for. Current purchases of Microsoft Surface computers for elementary staff planned computer replacements will make it necessary to add the vendors. So in other words, what they're saying is, is this for elementary staff? They're not, there's no indication of, you know, we don't have 7,000 employees. And if that's the case, and we're buying one for every, that means we're buying one for every employee that we have, including kitchen staff and things like that, which I understand we're not doing. But, you know, the other fear that I have is, is we're spending $3.4 million on computers to replace computers. And if anything has taught me, the last couple of months have taught me is, is if we go in and replace all the computers at one time, in four to five years, we're replacing all the computers again. And usually we phase this in, we don't just jump on it and block it.
Well, this is part of your plan that you all approved some years ago as it relates to technology plan for the district where you have your rotations. So this is the elementary year for rotation for technology. Then the following year, you will have middle school. Then the following year, you will have high school. And what happens is you do have a rotation of how you purchase technology and that is in your technology plan that you all have approved. So we're just following the plan of rotating through the cycle for replacement of technology.
I have a hard, hard time with this and I, I understand what you're saying and I do agree that we've talked about rotating them through, but in the past years, I've bought iPads, I've bought the, what's the other, the.
Surface.
Those, before the Surface, the, I can't think of it right now.
Chromebooks?
Chromebooks, thank you. And we bought tons of Chromebooks, we've bought tons of iPads. I mean, is, are we phasing all of those out? What are?
The, the Chromebooks and the iPads, iPads actually were for elementary teachers for their SRGs. However, the Chromebooks we've purchased were for student use. This particular item that you're looking at this, this afternoon is around teachers and staff and departments. It's not for students. The other portion that you paid for, for Chromebooks were for students.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there other questions?
Ben Blankley, district one, this, I had this question resolved in an email from Rob Dixon earlier, but I wanted to just mention it publicly. There was a question of if the Surface tablet computers would have external connectivity for external keyboards, mice, optical drives. And Rob confirmed in an email that yes, that is the case, that these do have the capability of connecting to external devices just like the teachers' laptops do today. So.
Okay. Any other questions? Ben, I mean Stan?
Stan Reeser, district four, I was actually going to ask Ben a question and I kind of understood that as well, but I wanted to make sure. So where does the keyboard actually go? Is it a, is it an actual hard keyboard or is it a soft keyboard that's on another screen?
Ben Blankley, district one, what I know of, of the Surface tablets is that they have a keyboard that is part of their cover, that is like a thin laptop-style keyboard. But then in addition to that configuration, it also provides ports that you can plug in a full-size USB keyboard as well.
So there are a lot of, Stan Reeser, so there are a lot of options?
Yes.
Ben Blankley.
Ben Blankley, district one, yes.
And, and this is Cheryl Logan, at large. There, this really is part of our ongoing replacing computers after a certain length of time. It's our normal purchase that we would have been having no matter what because this is the year for them to receive new computers, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Any other questions?
This is Alicia, sorry. Alicia Thompson.
Stan Reeser, and just to, again, for the people who may be watching this for the very first time, and that's the reason why it's on our consent agenda, is because this was already policy, this was already a strategy that we were following up to this.
That's right.
This is Alicia, that is correct.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
Ben Blankley, district one, I move, we approve item C1.
Stan Reeser, district four, I second.
It was moved by Ben Blankley and seconded by Stan Reeser that we approve this motion. Please cast your votes. Ben?
Ben Blankley, district one, yes.
Cheryl Logan, at large, yes.
Mike Rody, district five, no.
Stan Reeser, district four, yes.
Ron Rosales, district six, yes.
Julie and Ernestine?
Ernestine, Ernestine Crable, district three, yes.
Julie Hedrick, district two, yes.
The motion passes six one. Next item, please.
One moment, please. Mike Willoughby, under operations, item A, Resolution 2020-04, Wage Payments During Emergency School Closings. Currently, the U.S. is experiencing the pandemic and public health emergency of COVID-19. On March 17th, 2020, Kansas Governor Laura Kelly issued Executive Order Number 20-07, which is provided in Appendix 10A of this BOE agenda. Governor Kelly ordered that, quote, "All K-12 school buildings or facilities, whether public or private, used for student instruction are to close and cease in-person instruction until May 29th, 2020," end quote. In an email communication to all district staff on March 17th, Superintendent Alicia Thompson confirmed that staff will be paid during the emergency school closing. Today's agenda item includes Resolution 2020-04, Wage Payments During Emergency School Closings. The resolution describes how the district's payroll will be honored as regularly scheduled. It is recommended the board adopt Resolution 2020-04 provided in Appendix 10B of this BOE agenda.
Okay, and obviously this is the one where we are allowing our staff to continue to be paid even though they are working much differently than they've ever done before. Are there any comments or questions on this?
This is Ernestine, I am confused as to where we are on the agenda. Are we on 4A?
Yes, that's exactly.
Roman numeral 4A?
Number, roman numeral four, upper operations, and it's item number A.
Thank you.
Any, Stan?
Mike Rody, district five, I move that we make, that we accept the resolution.
Ben Blankley, district one, I second.
Stan, I saw you had a question. Oh, Stan, I heard you, saw you had a question.
Stan Reeser, district, I was just going to make the motion, but since Mike made the motion, that's good.
Okay, we do have a motion on the floor made by Mike Rody and seconded by Ben Blankley. Are there any other questions or concerns on this item? Okay, please cast your votes. Ron?
Ron Rosales, district six, yes.
Stan Reeser, district four, yes.
Mike Rody, district five, yes.
Cheryl Logan, at large, yes.
Ben Blankley, district one, yes.
Julie Hedrick, district two, yes.
Ernestine Crable, district three, yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Our staff will be very relieved that they're going to get paychecks. Next item, Mike.
Mike Willoughby, continuing under operations, item B, 2019-20 Attendance Waiver Application. As a result of COVID-19 and the closing of the Wichita Public Schools, the district must submit an application to the Kansas State Department of Education, or KSDE, to waive the 2019-20 attendance requirements to receive an exemption from KSA 72-3115, which is 1,116 attendance hours for all students and 1,086 attendance hours for high school seniors. The Wichita Public Schools has implemented a district-wide continuous learning plan to provide all students access to evidence-based resources, guidance, and feedback to instruction during the shutdown of schools. The purpose of this agenda item is approval of the application to waive 2019-20 attendance requirements as provided in Appendix 11 of this BOE agenda. It is recommended that the board approve the 2019-20 Attendance Waiver Application.
This particular agenda item is one of the reasons why it was important for us to have a meeting today because this waiver is due into the state before our next regularly-scheduled board meeting. So by voting on this, we're simply asking the state to waive their required number of hours because we're doing school much differently now. Are there any questions or concerns on this? Stan?
This is, this is Ernestine Crable, and I have a comment to make. There was a big headline nationally saying that one of the problems that this has, this whole COVID-19 shutdown has created, I mean, has demonstrated is the tremendous break or cavity between those who have access and those who do not. So one of the things that this can do is show us that indeed we can educate in a different way and kids can still get educated. I am thrilled with our districts bringing to our students this new way of, of learning. Thank you.
Stan?
Stan Reeser, district four, I just had a quick question for the superintendent. And this is jumping ahead, I realize this is jumping a couple steps ahead. But I just wanted to confirm, the few questions I have been receiving is, our plan, and I realize that may not be, like I said, I'm jumping a couple steps ahead here, but is our plan to pick up where we, we stopped, like a second grader would pick up, even though he or she's in third grade, they pick up where they were? Or are we expecting to stay up on where we're at and then we're freezing the grades and freezing where they're at and then they start over where they are? Or do we just write that off?
We don't write, we're not writing off anything. We're actually continuing our learning.
Yes.
And our students will continue in their current grade as of today, if they're in second grader, they will continue instruction and all of the packets and all of the work that they will be doing with their teachers will continue to be at the second grade level. When they return back in the fall, those second grade students will be third grade students because they would have completed the work and the conversations and interactions with their teachers that they needed to do to be able to move on to the next grade level. Does that answer your question?
It does. Stan Reeser, district four, for anyone that falls through the cracks, though, if they come back to school in the fall, and I realize we're not, we're going to do our best to make sure no one does fall through the cracks, but if anyone does fall through the crack and a teacher sees that student X is in third grade, but they obviously are midway through second grade level, I'm assuming then you're going into IEPs or?
Nope, not necessarily.
Okay.
Typically, we already have students that come to us that may have, be behind or not up to, to grade level standards. And that's what we do every day, all day anyway, is to accelerate the learning so that kids can, we can close gaps and fill in skill sets that they need to continue to learn. And that's what teachers do. That's why the SRGs are very, very important.
Right.
Because it shows exactly what the kids know, where they are, and then teachers can apply the appropriate strategies and interventions that are needed to be able to move those students to where they need to go. So we don't want parents to feel stressed out or worried or concerned. We want them to follow the packets. We want them to continue to allow kids to read, get some physical activity, continue to engage with their teachers. And then when we get back, we will do as we do before, we'll check to see where kids are and then we'll move them along the continuum as we always do.
Thank you, that answers my question. Stan Reeser, district four, thank you, that answers my question. It is, I recommend that the board approve, move that the board approve the 1920 Attendance Waiver Application.
Ron Rosales, district six, I second.
It was moved by Stan Reeser and seconded by Ron Rosales that we accept this motion. Please. Please cast your votes. Ron? Oh, I'm sorry, Mike?
Mike Rody, District Five, I need some clarification. I understand what we're doing there, and, you know, we need to be taking care of our kids, and that's what it's all about. But in the press conferences that I heard, the last one that I heard about the packets going out, was is that we weren't gonna take attendance, and they weren't mandatory to fill out, is what I heard. How are we, and then we're expecting our parents to pony up with most of the teaching, because the teachers can't do, do it from the house, which I understand, I mean, this is tough times, and I just need clarification, and I've had these questions posed to me, you know, if we don't have to do it, we don't do it, is it going to hurt us? Is it going to help us? Is it gonna make a difference? And with the explanations that I just heard, it confused me a little bit, because if I'm a parent and I say, okay, you guys just go outside, and you don't have to do this homework that you picked up, you know, how are we going to classify all of that, I guess?
Well, we are making checks with our students on a weekly basis. Teachers will be making contact with families to ensure the students are on track and keeping up with what they're being asked to do. So we are not just blanketing, saying we are not participating in any type of learning. Our hope is that we will be able to ensure that all parents and all students are moving along together, along the journey with the continuous learning plans. And so that is why we have those weekly checks on our students, to ensure that they are understanding. We have, we have hotlines available as well, so if parents have questions or need some additional supports with their students, they're able to also call the hotline, as well as they're able to contact their classroom teachers. So we are not just leaving families and students just out there in the cold, we're communicating with them on a weekly basis.
So what you're saying is, is if I'm a parent of a child, which, thank God I'm not anymore, if I have a problem with the homework, I can call my teacher, my student's teacher, and get hold of them during the day?
Yes, our students, our teachers are still working. They just are working in a different way at home, but they are still working, they're still participating in conference calls, they're in Zoom meetings, they're doing everything that they would normally be doing during the day, and they are still available for contact for their, for their student. And also, we have a hotline. So if parents also feel like, you know, that they need some more additional support, they also have a resource there as well.
Okay, I appreciate all of that, because that makes it a lot clearer.
This is Ernestine, I have a comment to make, and I understand what Mike Rody's question is. The thing is, is that we've always deal with that, teachers always deal with that coming in the third grade, in which some students are more ready for the beginning of third grade than others. But those students and those teachers then work to try to catch them up, and there are remedial, if you will, situations, and all students, when there's a summer break, have to have some remedial work to remind them in case they have forgotten things over the summer. So it's going to be a little bit more difficult for teachers, because there'll be probably a scattered, a broader spread between those who know and those who don't. But it won't be very much different than is normal when they come back in, at the beginning of the new year, that some will have read over the summer and done exercises in math, and others will have gone to the swimming pool every day and never looked at a book. So I think that it'll be difficult for teachers, but I don't think it'll be that different from what they already know to happen every September.
We do have a motion on the floor to approve this motion. Any other comments? Okay, Ron?
Ron Rosales, District Six, I second.
Stan Reeser, District Four, yes.
Just a second, Ron, you, you approve it?
Sorry, I thought, okay, my mistake. Ron Rosales, District Six, yes.
Okay.
Stan, oh, did you record mine?
Yeah.
Mike Rody, District Five, yes.
Cheryl Logan, at-large, yes.
Ben Blankley, District One, yes.
Julie Hedrick, District Two, yes. Ernestine Crable, District Three, yes.
The motion passes seven, zero. Next item, please.
Continuing under Operations, Mike Willoughby, Item C, Resolution 2020-05, Suspending the Units of Credit Requirement in BOE Policy 6333, Graduation Rule in Diplomas. BOE Policy 6333, Graduation Rule in Diplomas, which is provided in Appendix 12A of this BOE Agenda, sets a requirement for graduation of 23 units of credit for high school students. The district's graduation credit requirements exceed the state's requirement of 21 units of credit. Governor Kelly's Executive Order Number 20-07 closes all K-12 school buildings and ceases in-person instruction until May 29th, 2019. During the emergency closing of schools, a local school board can adopt a resolution that suspends its graduation policy if the local policy exceeds the credit requirements established by the Kansas State Board of Education or the Kansas State Department of Education. Today's agenda includes Resolution 2020-05 for seniors in the Wichita High School class of 2020. The resolution states that, quote, "all credit requirements above and beyond those minimum required credits set forth by the Kansas State Department of Education, which are contained in BOE Policy 6333, Graduation Rule in Diplomas, most recently approved in January 2019, be suspended for the graduating class of 2020. Students must meet all standards set out in KAR 91-31-35 unless otherwise modified by the Kansas State Board of Education or the Kansas State Department of Education to require, to qualify for graduation in 2020." In summary, Resolution 2020-05 suspends the 23 units of credit requirement in BOE Policy 6333, and permits Wichita High School seniors in the class of 2020 to graduate with a minimum of 21 units of credits as set out in KAR 91-31-35, which is provided in Appendix 12B. Seniors who have questions about their units of credit can contact their respective Wichita High School offices for more information. It is recommended the board adopt Resolution 2020-05, Suspending the Units of Credit Requirement in BOE Policy 6333, Graduation Rule in Diplomas, which is provided in Appendix 12C.
This is Cheryl Logan, at-large, and we, over the years, school boards have increased what the state required. Our high school students will, will have everything that the state requires, all the mandated classes, math and science and so on, but this is just taking away those two extra credits that as a board, we had added to our graduation rate. And obviously, things are not normal, so we want to not penalize students, because we have to close our schools down. So that's the reason that I think this is brought in. Dr. Thompson, is there anything you'd like to add to that?
Just so that you are aware, the Wichita Public Schools has a pretty rigorous expectation for graduation, as those additional classes, they are units of English and additional units of mathematics. So again, our diploma is a little bit more rigorous to receive because of the additional units in mathematics and English.
Are there any comments or questions on this agenda item?
Mike Rody, District Five, I want to just make sure, because I didn't hear the words, to make sure that I'm, I'm not missing something here. This is a one-time suspension. In other words, we don't have to go back in, next year and vote on this to put them back on, do we? Or this a one-time, one-shot deal?
It says in our agenda item that it's suspended for the graduating class of 2020, so it's a one-year only.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that we're clear on that, that we don't have to go back and, if we forget to change it, we, you know, because we're gonna get a mass of these, as we've already done with, you know, we're paying teachers and everything else. I just wanna make sure that we're, we're closing this hole back up next year and saying we're going back to the way we were. Because in all honesty, the use of the words "new normal" to me is a sad comment. This should not be our new normal. This should be an aberration in our lives that we're gonna get through, and we're gonna go back to the way we did things before this happened, and hopefully, with research and development and those types of things, that this will become just like any other virus that we've endeavored through the years, and that, you know, I hate the words "new normal." I, you just don't know how badly I hate those words, because this is not normal. And if people believe this is gonna be normal for the rest of our lives, I'm saddened. So I just wanna make sure that we're doing things to protect our kids and our staff and our parents and everybody else involved, because this is a bad deal, and I don't wanna downplay that. But we've gotta make sure that they understand that coming in next year, as a senior, I know that I'm gonna have so many graduation credits, and just because we waived it for this class, they got lucky, in a way, and I just wanna make sure that that's clear.
I think that's clear in this motion, that, that it's suspending only for this one year, and that we, it will automatically revert back to 23 credits next year and every year thereafter.
This is Ernestine. I'd like to point out a typo in the resolution, in the paragraph that begins Governor Kelly's executive order. It has the wrong date in line two, where it says to cease the in-person instruction until May 29th, and it has 2019, and it should say 2020.
Thank you, that is a correction.
We need a new motion on that?
Yes, we will need a, no, we don't need a new motion, because that's, well.
I move it if it's needed. I move the correction if it's needed.
All right.
It's just part of the agenda item.
It's just part of the agenda item, not the, not the vote itself.
Okay.
So I need a motion on this, though.
Ben Blankley.
I move we accept it. Mike Rody, District Five, I move that we accept it, as been read, with the change to 2020 if we need to.
Okay.
Ben Blankley, District One, I second.
Okay, it has been moved by Mike Rody and seconded by Ben Blankley that we accept this motion to adjust our credits for one year only. Please cast your votes. Ron?
Ron Rosales, District Six, yes.
Stan Reeser, District Four, yes.
Mike Rody, District Five, yes.
Cheryl Logan, at-large, yes.
Ben Blankley, District One, yes.
Julie Hedrick, District Two, yes. Ernestine Crable, District Three, yes.
The motion passes seven, zero. Next item, Mike.
Mike Willoughby, under Finance, None Submitted, Miscellaneous Executive Session.
Mike? Rody?
Mike Rody, District Five, I move that the board recess into executive session to discuss a student discipline appeal hearing pursuant to an exception relating to the actions adversely or favorably affecting a student under the Kansas Open Meetings Act, and the open meeting will resume in this room at 1:00, 1:15 PM.
It's been moved by Mike Rody that we adjourn to executive session. Is there a second?
I second, Ben Blankley, District One.
Ben Blankley has seconded. Please cast your votes. Ron?
Ron Rosales, District Six, yes.
Stan Reeser, District Four, yes.
Mike Rody, District Five, yes.
Cheryl Logan, at-large, yes.
Ben Blankley, District One, yes.
Julie Hedrick, District Two, yes. Ernestine Crable, District Three, yes.
The motion passes seven, zero. We are in executive session.
Okay, we would like to extend the executive session for another 10 minutes.
And we will need a motion to do that?
I move we extend the executive session to further discuss the discipline favorable or unfavorable about a student.
The motion was made by Mike Rody.
Ben Blankley, District One, I second.
The motion is seconded by Ben Blankley. Please cast your votes. Ron?
Ron Rosales, District Six, yes.
Stan Reeser, District Four, yes.
Mike Rody, District Five, yes.
Cheryl Logan, at-large, yes.
Ben Blankley, District One, yes.
Ernestine? Julie? Okay, go ahead, Julie. I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I had my mute turned off, and I said it, and then you, and then you asked me, so sorry. This is Julie Hedrick, District Two, yes. Ernestine, yes.
Okay, the motion passes seven, zero. We are in executive session for another 10 minutes. We are back from executive session. Next item, Mike.
Mike Willoughby, Appeal Hearing Case Three. On Thursday, March 26, 2020, at noon, an appeal hearing was held regarding an eighth-grade student from Wilbur Middle School.
This is Cheryl Logan. I, I make a motion that we uphold the findings of the hearing officer, and that the student, the ninth-grade student ought be, not be reassigned to Northwest High School. Thank you.
This is Julie Hedrick, District Two, and I second the motion.
The motion was made by Cheryl Logan and seconded by Julie Hedrick. Ron?
Ron Rosales, District Six, yes.
Stan Reeser, District Four, yes.
Mike Rody, District Five, yes.
Cheryl Logan, at-large, yes.
Ben Blankley, District One, yes.
Julie Hedrick, District Two, yes. Ernestine Crable, District Three, yes.
The motion passes seven, zero. Next item, Mike.
Mike Willoughby.
Stan Reeser, District Four, I move that we adjourn.
Mike Rody, District Five, I second that motion.
The motion was made for adjournment by Stan Reeser and seconded by Mike Rody. Please cast your votes. Ron?
Ron Rosales, District Six, yes.
Oh, sorry, Stan Reeser, District Four, yes.
Mike Rody, District Five, yes.
Cheryl Logan, at-large, yes.
Ben Blankley, District One, yes.
Julie Hedrick, District Two, yes. Ernestine Crable, District Three, yes.
Okay, motion passes seven, zero. Our next boarding, board meeting will be at the School Service Center at 12 o'clock on April the 20th. Thank you, and stay safe.